To call the Monday, March 18th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Gardner City Council that comes to order, the clerk will please call a roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Present.
Counselor General Lawitz.
Present.
Counselor Harder.
Present.
Counselor Heath.
Present.
Counselor Haglund.
Present.
Counselor Matt.
Present.
Counselor Tivo Munoz.
Present.
Counselor Tison.
Present.
Counselor Tyros.
Present.
And President Kuzinskas.
Present. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us to worthy deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of the good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to surround and inspire us in a united, harmonious, and... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, it's one of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recording shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? We will begin with the reading of the minutes of prior meetings, which there is none. And next is a public hearing, item 11199, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Allen Street, to install one jointly owned pole on Allen Street, beginning at a point approximately 430 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Allen Street and Winslow Street, install one jointly owned pole number seven for new houses. The public hearing is now open. The public hearing notice reads as follows. Notice to butters, March 11th, 2024, to butters and other interested parties, pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 166, subsection 22, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be conducted on Monday, March 18th, 2024, at 7:30 PM on the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England for permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Allen Street, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to install one jointly owned pole on Allen Street, beginning at a point approximately 430 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Allen Street and Winslow Street, install one jointly owned pole number seven for new houses. A sketch of the proposed pole location is attached for your edification, City Council of Gardner, TC Seraphin City Clerk. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the petition? Okay, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Okay, we are going to take two items out of order at this time. On page three of our city council agenda, items 11129 and 11130. Item 11129, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Dane Arnold to the position of Public Works Director for term expiring January 4th, 2027. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Director Arnold is our longest-serving department head. He oversees and is responsible for municipal grounds, highway, and water and sewer operations in our city. He has been an asset in guiding improvements to our city's infrastructure, and having the opportunity to work with the director closely on the Public Service Committee, I can personally say I've been especially impressed with his forward-thinking and ways to do things better, and his ever-present ability to listen and hear differing opinions on topics. The director was especially grateful to his staff for their hard work and thanked them for their support. The committee met with the mayor and the appointee on this reappointment. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointee certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, second by Counselor General Lawitz, to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. During the committee meeting, I should have went ahead and, uh, I'm sorry, the appointments committee meeting, I should have went ahead and made this comment earlier. There was an interaction that me and Mr. Director Arnold had, where I had a phone call one day by a constituent who was not happy with a said situation. She called me while I was at Starbucks, and she just happened to be driving by Starbucks. Caught me in the parking lot. I told the constituent I will ride to her house, go ahead and go see what was going on. I followed her to her house, and to my surprise, Mr. Arnold was already there. So I just wanted to go ahead and remember that situation, but I just wanted to go ahead and put that on record. I was amazed with that right there, and surprised myself. And, you know, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Harder?
Yes, I want to thank Director Dane Arnold. I've been here for 13 years, and through those years, he always answers my calls when I have problems in the ward, whether it's the first one in the morning or the last one of the day. He does a really good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11130, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Michael F. Ellis to the position of Senior Citizens Director for term expiring January 4th, 2027. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be refusing myself from this item due to our personal relationship with the appointee.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haglund?
Thank you, Madam President, and through you to the counsel. Mike Ellis, as Senior Citizen Center Director, is completing his first three-year term as the Senior Citizens Center Director. We met with him earlier this evening, and in that time, and in our discussions, you know, with the glowing recommendation from the mayor, Ron Darmetka was also present, Chair of the Council on Aging, in support of Mr. Ellis for this position and this reappointment. It was clear just the great work he's done in raising the profile of the senior center, and the efforts they've done to increase programming, and to raise awareness of this resource for people in our community. So with all those positive recommendations, and I think something notable to point out to everyone as well, is that given their small staff, you know, he's one director, a couple of staff under him, they really rely heavily on volunteers, and in this past year, he let us know that they've had over 400 volunteers committing 10,000 hours of service to the senior center, which is equivalent of around the estimated $270,000 that the city is not incurring and in a way saving. So I think that's testament to the leadership that he has shown in that position, and so I move for the appointment of Mr. Ellis to be certified.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Mack, to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Mack?
As a member of the Public Welfare Committee, the chair for the last two years, two terms, I have to say that I have gone to the senior center on many occasions. I read every newsletter and every email that we receive. I just want to commend Director Ellis because we have a very robust senior center. With the resources and the programs they offer, I was there today helping to serve the St. Patrick's Day dinner, and I can't say enough, I'm looking forward to their move to the new Waterford Street building because I think the senior center, the Council on Aging, and everything that they do for our senior citizens can only grow and offer more and more different programming. And for those that don't take advantage of it, please do so. Please go on their website. Please get their newsletter, whatever you need. Please reach out because it is a tremendous asset to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting, swearing those who have been appointed here this evening. We will reconvene after the swearing is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time. Dane and Mike, you're on it. I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of Public Works Director.
Perform the duties of Public Works Director.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
Raise your hands, who repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Ellis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of Senior Citizen Director.
Perform the duties of Senior Citizen Director.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
To call the meeting back to order. Communications from the mayor, appointments, item 11207, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Linda Dembeck to the position of Disability Commission Member for term expiring March 4th, 2027. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to refer this item to the Appointments Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, second by Counselor Heath, to refer the item to the Appointments Committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Communications, item 11208, a measure authorizing the FY 2024 Community Development Block Grant Mini Entitlement Plan. I'm going to ask the mayor to come forward to give us some information regarding this item, please.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is the annual resolution that comes before the city council every year. Gardner is what's considered by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development as what's called a mini entitlement community. That means we are not have, we are not big enough as a city to be gateway status. If we were a gateway city, we'd have these funds directly come to the city annually, and we wouldn't have to apply for them on an annual basis. Gardner meets all the criteria to become a gateway city, except you need to have at least 35,000 in population in order to qualify for that designation, where we're at 21,000 residents here in Gardner. That's why we have to apply for these funds on an annual basis. The application that's before you covers various different activities, but I do want to stress that this is a grant application. The funds are not guaranteed. However, a supportive vote of the city council is required to submit this application to the Commonwealth's Department of Housing and Livable Communities, which is the pass-through for these federal funds by March 5th, March 25th of this year. So that's why I want to thank the council president for allowing me to speak on the matter and putting this before the city council from when Director Bureau Guard was able to send this to the city council for consideration. These funds annually do cover the cost of several different things throughout the city. The majority of the salaries that are funded for the Department of Community Development and Planning are funded out of this grant, a large portion of the director's salary, about 90% of the assistant director's salary, some portions of the financial coordinator's salary for the Department of Community Development and Planning come out of this grant. If you look at the budget, which is the grid matrix that's included in your packet, that's what that $125,000 covers is the salaries for those individuals in that department. Additionally, there are certain things that these funds have to be used to. A certain percentage has to go to social services within the city's limits, and then the rest can be used towards other projects of community development, the removal of blight, things of that nature. Next year's, which I do want to stress, these are funds to be used, applied for this year to be used in next year. So these funds would not be used until 2026, include the demolition of the former School Street School Building located at 53 School Street, which is, has been condemned by the building commissioner due to its current state of condition. The goal would be to demolish the property, extend a parking lot for Jackson Playground that's there that currently has no dedicated parking to it, and then improve some park space there. The land underneath the school is subject to Article 97 protections of the Commonwealth Constitution. That is because part of the land that it was built on was originally taken by the city to form Jackson Playground. And where, when the Commonwealth adopted Article 97 via a ballot measure in a local referendum at a state election, it did not grandfather properties that were built on the land. It just simply said any land that was purchased for this use is subject to those protections. Therefore, if we wanted to do anything with this land other than either refurbish the building, which is deemed to be too cost prohibitive at this point because it is condemned, if the building was removed, to do anything else besides keep it as parkland, we would have to go to an act where the legislature would have to take a roll call, recorded vote, and then have that pass through both the House, the Senate, and then be signed by the governor. So this is the way to get things done, and an active way to remove the issues that we've had at the building with different break-in issues, with different structural concerns, issues of fears of collapse, and things of that matter, and improving that area of the city to a larger extent. The social service programs that are included in this year's grant application include $15,000 to go to our Gardner athletic programs at Gardner High School and Gardner Middle School. For the past four years, the city has waived, and by waived, I mean we have budgeted for or paid for in one way or another, all athletic user fees for our students at the high school and the middle school. Prior to when we started doing this, students were charged $100 per sport per season, except for hockey, which was charged $500 per season. And those were in order for students to be able to play. We wanted to make sure that there were no barriers, especially income barriers or poverty barriers, that barred any of our students from being on the teams that they play on. So we have covered that. Some of that has come from the CDBG. The remaining $23,000 is coming from the school department's annual operating budget. So it's operated there because CDBG funds are restricted to assist social services with people who are in a low to moderate income demographic, so there's income restrictions as to who can qualify for these funds. But that covers about 150 athletes during the school year through this grant application. The Gardner Emergency Housing Mission offers transitional housing for people in the city facing homelessness. The housing that they offer is six to nine months, six months normally with the option to extend to nine months for people who are homeless. At the same time, they're receiving counseling for workforce training, job application writing, and then ways to financial benefits, financial management as well, so that once they get through those six to nine months, if they do find housing after that, they can stay a little longer under their feet and have a better idea, to prevent them from coming back into a homelessness situation. The Voices of Truth, $12,000 for domestic violence prevention, offering counseling services for individuals who are in issues of domestic violence. We offer a part-time domestic violence advocate at the police station right now through the city's operating budget. This would fund their advocacy services to work with those individuals above and beyond what Danielle Drew, our city domestic violence advocate, can do at the police station with the 20 hours that she works over there. The Gardner Community Action Team is looking to employ a part-time individual helping with all feeding programs of the agency, particularly with their food pantry program and their congregant meals programs. So that's what that $16,000 is going towards, and then again, the rest is the stuff we've already talked about. So for a total grant fund of $925,000, just under $1 million, it should be noted, too, that the city will have to provide a match in some way, shape, or form, or the individual organization, in the case of the CAC, you'll see that they have a match of $5,216. They will have to come up with that on their own, because the whole project is going to cost that. The CDBG application looks at the full picture of the matter, and then we provide some what we can, and then they provide the total after that. The Gardner Emergency Housing Mission is fundraising the remaining $5,000 towards their project. And then with the demolition of School Street School, mainly because of the asbestos in the building, there are additional costs associated with that. So just like we did with the other demolition projects we've done for Greenwood Pool, for the Rome Building, things like that, the city would have to appropriate in next fiscal year, the $130,300 towards a match, if you will, for the demolition of that building. So that's the brief rundown of the information included in this year's CDBG grant, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the counselors through you, Madam President.
Counselor Mack?
What are the estimated administrative and delivery costs for $125,000?
So those are the salaries?
Exactly.
Those are the salaries of departments, yes.
Thank you. Do the other counselors have any questions for the mayor regarding the subject? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Is there a motion? Counselor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to authorize the plan.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, second by Counselor Tyros, to authorize the plan. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. My hope was to discuss the process surrounding this item at the posted informal meeting that's supposed to take place earlier tonight, and to have a discussion and a chance for my fellow counselors to ask questions to the Director of Community Development. I stressed this in my original motion, that there were issues found by the state's regular monitoring of the previous year's block grant programs administration, that were not catastrophic, but issues nonetheless. Issues that have the potential consequence, potential consequences to the completion of previous year's block grant projects, and potential future funding of projects that we have before us tonight. Projects that identified in the FY 24 plan, we must pass tonight, because if it doesn't pass, the city will not make the application deadline. The item was given to the council with, at the last possible moment. We are put in a position that we are unable to raise any questions or concerns with enough time to actually consider the motion in front of us, give feedback, and for the steering committee to, you know, reconsider the items and resubmit the application with our input. While I'm disappointed that we are not able to have that discussion before tonight's vote, I do hope this item passes, and I do look forward to having that discussion with the Director of Community Development to ensure the council is aware of the issues of this program, which administers and distributes critical funding to programs benefiting low and moderate income families and community beneficial projects, that the issues are being faced, addressed, and corrected going forward. Because as the mayor just previously stated, the council is often asked to appropriate funds to get these projects across the finish line, and these projects are important. There's things that we should consider when we make those votes with all of our other considerations that we make here in this chamber. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Orders, item 11209, an order appropriating $77,318 from Free Cash to the IT Department, City Hall Cyber Security System account. Counselor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer this item to the Finance Committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, second by Counselor Mack, to refer the item to the Finance Committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11210, an order appropriating $49,000 from Free Cash to the mayor's unclassified professional services grant writing expenses. Counselor General Lawitz?
I move to refer this item to the Finance Committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, second by Counselor Mack, to refer the item to the Finance Committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11213, an order appropriating $55,500 from Free Cash to the Elections and Registration Department for election officer salary and professional services expenses. Counselor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. As the others, I move to refer this item to the Finance Committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, second by Counselor Mack, to refer the item to the Finance Committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Ordinance, item 11211, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner to add a new Chapter 15 to be entitled Agricultural Commission. Counselor Mack?
Madam President, I refer this to the Public Welfare Committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor General Lawitz, to refer to the Public Welfare Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item 11203, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 41, entitled Handicap Parking, Central Street, from a point 33 feet from the corner of Maple Street, East Lee, for 40 feet, two spaces. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. There's an item that came to the Safety Committee from the Traffic Commission. We did discuss this item. It is a housekeeping item to codify the handicap parking spaces that were, that were added when the bike trails were redone around Monument Park. However, before we do that, when the ordinance was written, it was actually conflating two items. So we need to amend the ordinance and change, so we need to change the side from south to north and change the ordinance to read adding instead of removing. So I would move to amend with those changes. Show us a copy of your ordinance as written.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, second by Counselor Heath, to, to send the item to first printing as amended. We've all been handed a copy of the amended language. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11204, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Edgel Street from Elm Street to Lawrence Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. This is another item that was recommended by the Traffic Commission. They are going to implement this on a 60-day trial basis, so therefore we ask for more time on this item.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item 11...
Sorry, sorry. Does this need to be referred?
This item, does, you met on this item?
We did meet on this item. Okay. Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The, so that's just for clarification. So these items are in front of the council on the agenda for the first time, Madam Clerk?
Yep.
But they had a scheduled meeting, and so it can, it was submitted directly to the committee, and so they were able to take them up at their committee meeting without it being referred.
Okay.
Before the study.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mack?
Just for a court of order for clarification, when the safety committee comes back, I'm just having a hard time with Edgel Street from Elm to Lawrence. Edgel Street is this way, and Elm's this way, and Lawrence is here, so I'm just having, if we could get a map of this. I'm just having, it should be, is it Elm Street from Edgel to Lawrence?
It's the north side of Edgel, from Elm Street all the way down to Lawrence.
Up to Lawrence?
Yes.
Okay, so one way. Okay, thank you. I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
So it's clarified, it's clear as we're in?
It is clear as we're in now. Thank you.
Item 11205, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Park Street from Cottage Street to Central Street. Street from Cottage Street to Central Street. Counsel Craig Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, we met on this item. This was recommended to us from the Traffic Commission. This is to codify changes that have already been made because of the bike path that was added to the north side of Park Street. Because of that, they have removed all the parking on the south side of Park Street next to Monument Park. So this is just codifying that, and I move the ordinance to first printing.
Motion made by Counsel Cormier, seconded by Counsel Heath, to send the item to first printing. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11206, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Pine Street from West Line Street southerly for a distance of 50 feet. Counsel Craig Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, we met on this item, and the committee was unanimously in favor. This would take the... When you're coming up Line Street onto Park Street, Pine Street, sorry, and if you're looking to your right, this would take the very first parking spot out in front of the library. Right now, it's a very blind corner. So the Traffic Commission was recommending to remove that one spot, which would be roughly 50 feet from the corner of Line Street onto Pine Street. Again, the committee discussed this with the deputy chief, and we're unanimously in favor, and I therefore move the ordinance to first print. Recommend to move the ordinance to first printing.
Motion made by Counsel Cormier, seconded by Counsel Hardern, to send the item to first printing. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11212, election of the city clerk. Counsel General Outts?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer this item to the Finance Committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Outts, seconded by Counsel Mack, to refer the item to the Finance Committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Reports of standing committees, appointments committee, item 11127, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Tom Azupa to the position of building commissioner for term expiring January 9th, 2027. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. While the appointments committee has made great progress, I'd like to respectfully request item 11127, 11139, 11140, 11141, 11142, 11143, 11144, 11150. One more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time on all of those items. The committee will be granted more time. We have taken up items 11129 and 11130. Item 11134, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Carla J. Wajikawitz to the position of trustee Williams Rockwell Educational Gift Fund for term expiring January 4th, 2027. Counsel Heath?
Madam President, sorry, one moment if you give the interruption, but I'm going to recuse myself of this item, as well as 11135, as an employee of the school department.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met with this appointment with the mayor. I know I'm not going to try to say her last name. However, this is the trustee of the Williams Rockwell... This is a reappointment. This is her second reappointment, or I'm sorry, her first reappointment. She just completed her first three-year term. She's a former elementary school teacher, right-hand gardener. She brings a key perspective to the group. She's the only trustee that has classroom experience. With that being said, the mayor truss her, we truss her, and the committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move this appointment to be scheduled.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Heath, seconded by Counsel Tyros to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11135, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Rice Esquire to the position of trustee Williams Rockwell Educational Gift Fund for term expiring January 4th, 2027. Counsel Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on this reappointment with the mayor. Mr. Attorney Bob Rice, another trustee of the Williams Rockwell. He's been an active member in the Gardner community. He's a former attorney, former director of the library, and also a former state rep. He knows a lot about Gardner, and he brings a lot of experience to this role. This is a volunteer position. With that being said, the committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move this appointment to be scheduled.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Heath, seconded by Counsel Tyros to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Safety Committee, item 111... I'm sorry. 11086, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Comey Street. Counsel Craig Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. The DPW installed signs for the police department's 60-day trial on Comey Street last week, so therefore we ask for more time to see what the residents' response is to that trial.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item 11115, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Douglas Road. Counsel Cormier?
Again, the DPW and the police department is looking to implement a 60-day trial on this in short order. Therefore, we ask for more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Service Committee, item 11199, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Allen Street, to install one jointly owned pole on Allen Street beginning at a point approximately 430 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Allen Street and Winslow Street. Install one jointly owned pole, number seven, for new houses. We had a public hearing earlier this evening on this item. Counselor Tisoni?
Yep, Madam President. The Service Committee would like to request more time, as we will discuss this at our next meeting. It's to be scheduled next week, I believe.
Thank you. If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, item 11112, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled Zoning, to add sports betting to the zoning table of uses. Counsel Heath?
I make a motion to send the item to second and final printing for passage.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Heath, seconded by Counsel Thibault Munoz, to send the item to second and final printing for passage. Is there discussion on the motion? This item requires a two-thirds vote, and we will do a roll call vote on this item. Seeing there is no discussion, the clerk will please call a roll.
Counsel Brooks?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Outts?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Haglund?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinska?
Yes. 11 yeas, the motion passes. Item 11113, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled Zoning, to amend Section 1070 thereof, entitled Marijuana Establishments, to change the method to increase the quota allowed by the code of the city of Gardner. I wanted to take a moment to address an issue on this item. I would like to offer clarification for item number 11113. At our previous city council meeting on Monday, March 4th, I announced that a two-thirds majority vote was required for this item, which was eight votes to pass. The initial vote on the motion for the item to be sent to first printing was taken, and the result was seven yes and three no votes. I announced that the item did not pass. This was incorrect, I misspoke, and I apologize. Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts states that no zoning ordinance or amendment thereto shall be adopted or changed except by a two-thirds vote of all the members of a city council. And so this applies to a vote made to send the item to second and final printing for passage, like in this case. And then the initial vote to print is not a vote to adopt or change the zoning ordinance or amendment. The general laws actually do not require that any vote be taken on the initial vote to print, which, as it applies in this case to item 11113, is the vote to send the item to first printing. By Section 24 of the Gardner City Charter, the affirmative vote of a majority of all the members of the council shall be necessary to adopt any motion, resolution, or ordinance. And so in Gardner, we take a vote on the initial vote, which would be to send the item to the first printing, and that requires a majority vote, which would be six votes to pass. And so we voted seven to three on the initial vote. As the vote stands, that would have passed the vote at our previous meeting. So as the general laws say, the final vote, which we would be entertaining this evening, requires a two-thirds majority vote, which would be the eight votes to pass. I sincerely apologize for any confusion regarding this item. I did reach out to the council and send them a clarifying email on Friday, March 8th, once I had confirmed that I had the right information from the general laws as well as the city charter. And the clerk and I had actually both determined the initial and final votes were required a two-thirds majority vote, as we do speak many times before each city council meeting, as we were going by what the general laws had said. But after we further reviewed it, and we saw that the general laws only require it for the vote to pass it, which is the second vote, we then had determined that the city actually having a more stringent and strict policy, you actually can follow that in this case, and well, you do follow that, because the state does not require any vote on the initial vote. The city actually does, and it's a majority vote of six votes. I hope that is clear and concise as I could make it. And again, as the vote was taken, the vote stands. So if it had been seven yes and three no, then that would have passed with it being a majority vote. So again, I apologize. We do try to be as thorough as we can. We're actually a little bit too stringent on that one. So the item is before us this evening for... to be considered as it would have passed, and it did go to first printing as the vote stood. So I just wanted to offer that clarification at the beginning. Counsel Mack?
Just on a point of order, when the motion was made by, I believe Counsel Heath, the motion was not made to go to first printing on the March 4th, meaning it was just a vote on the motion. And even in the agenda, it doesn't... There was no... On March 4th, there was no notion that it was to go to first printing. So is that still... I guess my... I'm looking at the order of the vote. The motion was on the item, but the maker of the motion for the vote did not make the motion to vote for first printing. So we're assuming it's going to go to second printing, and that was a vote for first printing, even though that was not the motion at the time?
We'll take a brief review.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to... Call the meeting back to order? To clarify the counselor's question, the motion was made by Counselor Heath and seconded by Counselor Tyros to send the item to first printing, we just verified. It will be in the meeting minutes. And currently, it would be on the City of Gardner's YouTube channel on our previous meeting. It's 45 minutes and about 32 seconds into the meeting, if anyone did want to check it. But we did just double-check and verify that it was, the item, the item's motion was to send it to first printing. Again, it was a seven yes, three no vote. And it should have been announced that it did pass to go to first printing. So this evening, it is back on our council agenda. And it would be considered at this point for its second and final printing or passage. This would be the final consideration of the item. So that's what I just wanted to add at the beginning of this, to play some clarification. I appreciate everyone's patience. And again, the opportunity for me to give some clarifying information about that error. So thank you. Is there a motion? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to send the item to second and final printing for passage.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, seconded by Counselor Thibault Munoz, to send the item to second and final printing for passage. This, is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Mack?
I just want to thank you, Madam President, for looking into this. I just wanted to make sure that we were doing everything, you know, through the legal process, whether it passes or doesn't. But I appreciate you for taking the time to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I appreciate your explanation for what happened with the vote two meetings ago. I think it was very clear, and straightens out some confusion that I had after the fact. I do want to say that I still intend to vote no on this matter. I do feel strongly that the business in this community is finite. And I would, as I had said last time, that I would rather have this split between two businesses than four, so that there would be two successful businesses operating, rather than four competing for smaller shares of the business, and finding ways to cut corners to make their profit, or trying to grow the business within this community, which I don't think is a good idea. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Tyros?
I too would like to thank the city clerk and the president for ensuring the work going into meetings and after meetings, to ensure the job's done thoroughly and correctly. So I think you guys did a good job explaining the situation. And as Counselor Brooks said, I intend to vote the way I did when we sent this to first printing, just a matter of differing opinions on business conditions. So I appreciate Counselor's comments and everyone's opinions that they stated last meeting, and would be supporting this ordinance change. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to thank you guys, because I'm going to be honest with you. I was sitting here trying to find my notes, and I forgot exactly what I said at the last meeting. But thank you guys for clarifying it. And obviously, if it's on YouTube, I said it. So. But going off of what Counselor Brooks went ahead and said about the four versus the two, which I understand and I respect that, I just find it kind of weird on, if there was any other business that was coming in the city that had no issues and only brought in revenue. You don't know if it's there unless you know it's there. Why restrict it down to two? Where, you know, if it goes to four and it becomes two, I can understand that. But like, you know, just like gas stations, you know, I got to be honest with you, not that I drive gas, but when I drive my fiance's car, you know, I fill up in other cities, because the gas is cheaper there. And I feel like there's a lot of people who are in the dispensaries who go to other cities because their prices are better there, because there's more competition there. So that's how I look at it. I'm not saying that I'm right, but that's just the way I look at it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Haglund?
Thank you, Madam President, and through you to the council. As a new council, I also appreciate the clarifications. So thank you for your due diligence on that. And similarly, I understood and sympathized with the concerns and opposition raised at our last meeting. Ultimately, I did vote in favor of this, as I will again tonight. I feel similarly that allowing for the possibility, of course, doesn't guarantee that we will have more. But ultimately, that's for the market to decide. As was pointed out previously, there's a rigorous process that these establishments have to go through in order to open their doors. And so I feel that that would be vetted ahead of time. Furthermore, as I was looking through our packets, the planning board had voted unanimously in favor of this. Chief McAveen had provided a letter around maybe safety concerns, dispelling many of those. So I appreciate them for submitting that information. So for those reasons, among others, such as the potential economic benefits, I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? So this does require a two-thirds vote this time around, and we will do a roll call vote on this. And if there's no further discussion, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
No.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
No.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
No.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Eight yeas, three nays, the motion passes. Item 118, 11180, an order appropriating $625,000 from stabilization to DPW salt shed. Counselor Mack?
I make a motion to move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Tyros to move the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Brooks?
Yes, Madam President. When the bond market reviews the city's finances and gives the city a credit rating, one thing it looks at is the city's stabilization fund. Increasing value is good, decreasing value is not good. While special purpose stabilization funds, like the one the city has for vehicle purchase, are expected to fluctuate, the general stabilization fund should not. In his presentation to city council during an informal meeting a few weeks ago, the mayor noted that the stabilization fund is supposed to be reserved for emergencies, ones that aren't covered by insurance or state and federal emergency declarations. He cited what Leominster is going through as the result of the rain deluge last fall. That is major infrastructure damage with no outside financial support from insurance or the state and federal governments. I also believe that stabilization can assist with temporary cash flow. For example, when free cash has not been certified and the city has an unexpected expense that would normally be covered by free cash. The funds are appropriated from stabilization fund and then returned to the fund when free cash is certified, all within the same fiscal year. That example is slightly different from this request, however, because free cash has already been certified, and we are saying that we expect to reimburse stabilization, but are not certain, depending on the winter. I am also concerned about future needs. In the near future, if a building needs a new roof or a stormwater line needs major repair, are we going to be asked for additional funds from stabilization? It can be a slippery slope. Having said all that, I accept the mayor's opinion that the salt shed needs to be replaced, and that time is of the essence. And while I have made clear my discomfort with the funding proposal, I accept that the mayor is the person who recommends how expenses are funded. I am willing to go along with this recommendation with the expectation that every effort will be made to return the funds to stabilization from free cash after the winter is over, or that future appropriations from free cash will replenish the fund within four years. I also expect that there will not be additional similar requests to fund projects from stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Tyros?
Counselor Brooks put it very well, the same reservation as I had with this item. I think there's no doubt that the city needs to undergo this project, not only for the safety of our DPW workers working in and near that building, but also for the safety of the citizens and people who visit town in the winter, if there were to be a snow event and we were unable to access our salt reserves. I think the mayor has put together a pretty thorough financial comparison against the loan order, against the considerations Counselor Brooks has brought up. I agree with them, and I appreciate Counselor Mack's request for more time on this item, so that we have more time to sit with it and analyze the decision for ourselves. And I do think the city is making the best decision we have in this situation. I will be supporting this order.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Mack?
When I first was elected to the council, I served on the Public Service Committee. Back then, this was a desperate need of the Department of Public Works. At the time, we were paying more money than we needed to for salt, because we could not have the surplus on hand, because we had nowhere to store it. So this is a much-needed item. I just want to clarify, the reason I asked for more time is I had a lot of questions. Last week, I sat down with the director of the DPW and two of his staff members, and they answered all of my questions, all of my concerns. I saw the site plan, the materials they are going to use. So, as much money as this is that we are expending out through the stabilization fund, we also have to realize the amount of money that we could also save with the purchase of salt, that we can buy more, not have to rely on neighboring communities. And this is in the best interest of the safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Okay, again, this item requires a two-thirds vote, which is eight votes to pass. And we're going to do a roll call vote. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, the motion passes. There is no new business. Counsel comments and remarks? Counselor Mack?
I just wanted to make a mention, a very unusual approach from the Gardner High School class of 2024. They are looking for sponsors for, to sponsor prom tables to offset the cost of this year's prom for their students. It's $100 to sponsor a table. More information is on the Gardner High School Facebook page, or you could reach out to one of the class advisors, Emily Miller, at the high school. But I think this is a great way to support our students as they approach their graduation season. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Very briefly, I just wanted to make a shout-out and thanks to Rep. Zlatnik. The council president and I had the opportunity to tour a new furniture factory in Gardner. Would You Build It is the name of it. They specialize in kitchen islands, and they're made right here in Gardner, handcrafted. We were able to take a tour of the facility, the factory that makes the furniture, and Rep. Zlatnik was critical in helping get the, which is a big business incubator, up and running, which helped the business itself get up and running. And the owner had spoken to me about, had spoken to me, rather, about some of the challenges he had faced getting up and running in our city, and some of the zoning challenges he had faced, going from an industrial former factory to a current factory. The amount of red tape and work he had to get involved in, it almost hampered his doors from opening, actually. So I just wanted to thank Rep. Zlatnik for that opportunity, and also kind of make a little note to think about how we have zoning ordinances in town and what makes sense with our current Gardner of today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further counsel comments and remarks? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo a statement that I had during our safety committee meeting on Friday. There was a incident with a gentleman that had a heart attack in one of the supermarkets, just as recent. And, you know, I just want to give a personal shout-out and a big thank you and recognition to the Gardner PD, Woods Ambulance, and the fire department for what they did. Because this gentleman, he was unalive, and he is doing well. And he's back. You know, I ran into his family, and they went ahead and they told me. And I just want to make sure that they know that, you know, they made a big difference, and they are very appreciative to them all. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Further counsel comments and remarks? Seeing that there is none, I'll entertain a motion on Florida adjournment for the closing prayer.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tison, seconded by Counselor Tyros. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint liberation and action witnessed during the course of this meeting. Bless the Lord, all who are gathered here, and the people whose representatives we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen. Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.